... meeting to order, everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We're take the roll.
Mia O'Connor.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Olms.
Here.
Dizio.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Brock.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
All right, where'd my... Uh, we have a public hearing on applications received.
Presentation first.
Oh, presentations, okay, sorry about that. Presentation on the 2020 financial report?
Who would it be, who would it be?
April Anderson.
April, got it, I'll let her in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, April, you are connected and you are up, so welcome and it's all yours.
Okay, just, are you able to hear me?
Yes. Yes, and we see you.
Okay, awesome, great. Good evening, everyone. I'm April Anderson from Clifton, Larson, Allen, here to present your 2020 audit report. And I believe attached to your meeting materials tonight was the full audit report and then, and in the front of that was a four-page audit notation summary. And so that's what I'll be highlighting tonight. So that is really taking a lot of the key pieces of information, the high-level information, out of the full audit report that's over 100 pages long, summarizing it here for you, and we'll go over that then. So I'll start right there on item number one in the audit report notations. And there you will see that the audit opinion that we issued on your financial statements for 2020 was an unmodified audit opinion. And so that means it's the cleanest opinion that you can receive or the highest opinion that you can receive. So your financial statements, between us and working with Allison and her team, they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. They are in accordance with all the governmental accounting standards that you have to follow as a governmental entity. So obviously, that's what you're striving to receive there with the unmodified opinion. The second part of item number one is the management letter that we issue. And in this letter, we are required to report to you, governance and management, any deficiencies in internal controls that we note as we go through the audit. So here you will see that we report three material weaknesses. These are very common findings. We work with over 170 governmental entities in just northwest Wisconsin, and most of them, we report these findings due to the size and makeup of the entity. And these findings you've had reported in the past, so there's nothing new, but you do need to be aware of them and cognizant of that they exist. So the first one is limited segregation of duties. And this relates to the different processing of transactions, payroll, accounts payable, disbursements, receiving, journal entries. Not one person should really have different access to the different parts of that process, those different processes. So they shouldn't be able to initiate the transaction, reconcile it, and report it. Again, due to the size and makeup, you only have a few people working on the accounting and financial information, and so it's not feasible to really split up the different parts of, or all the different parts of those processes. And it's not cost-effective to necessarily hire on more individuals to be able to split them up further. The key is, though, to continue to assess those processes and controls that you do have in place, to continue to improve upon those as far as review of journal entries, review of disbursements, and those types of things. The second one listed there is a material weakness for material audit adjustments. And then what this relates to is that we, as we go through the audit, we do propose multiple audit adjustments to get the numbers in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And this is common because we, there's lots of rules and regulations that you have to follow. You look to us to be the expertise to help you implement those and make sure that you're following those. And so along the way, we do propose certain journal entries. Obviously, Allison and your staff at the city do review and approve those entries to make sure that they agree with them. And then the very last item that we, I issued there for a material weakness is the preparation of the financial statements. So under standards, the financial statements are technically the responsible of governance and management. However, again, you do look to us to provide that support and assistance to draft the financials. As I mentioned already, it's over 150 pages to pull all the financial information together in the full audit report. And so I don't, I don't think Allison would say that she has extra time on her hands to be able to pull that all together. So we help and assist with that. Again, very common, and that we are drafting financials for most of the governmental entities we work with. So that is the overview of the high-level results of the audit. I guess I don't know how you want to approach this, if there's any questions. For me, you can ask during the presentation if you want to on my behalf, or if you want to do that at the end. But otherwise, then we'll jump into item number two, which is getting into some of the numbers then. So item number two is your general operating fund of the city. And so this is where, obviously, most of the activity occurs for your general operations, the city hall, general government, police, fire, and that type of activity. And so here you'll see that we do provide a four-year summary, so you can see how things have trended over the last few years and changed. I'm not going to hit on all the lines here, I'm going to get down to really focus on what we look at as a financial benchmark and that sort of thing. So the top part is the assets, then you have your liabilities. And what we really get down to and focus more on is your assets less your liabilities, which is your fund balance. So that's kind of what's accumulated or what remains as far as what you have as reserves. And so here in 2020, you'll see that your fund balance increased by $72,000 over last year. And I just want to, there were some bigger changes in the last couple of years, so I just kind of want to remind you of what those were. In 2019, you had a big decrease in fund balance, but that was a plan to decrease with your contribution towards the fire, the new fire station. And then in 2018, you actually had a big increase because of some sale of property. And so some unusual items that occurred in that year. So in this year, in 2020, you had an increase by 72,000. So, you know, a little bit over break-even, your revenues exceeded your expenditures by that 72,000. But how we do break down fund balance even more is you'll see that it's broken into three different parts there, non-spendable, assigned, and unassigned. And so you'll see non-spendable is only 73,000, that relates to delinquent taxes and prepaid. So they're in your assets, but they're not really in a form that you can spend them. They're already spent, or they're not just readily available. Then you have assigned amount of 545,000. And this, you may have heard as like carryovers or designated items. And so what this balance relates to is you have $443,000 set aside for health insurance in this balance, along with 80,000 for fire equipment and 13,000 for police equipment, plus a few other smaller items. So you've already designated or set aside some of that funding for those specific purposes. So ultimately, what that gets you down to then is your unassigned fund balance. And you have that at 4.9 million, which has increased a little bit from last year, but is pretty similar to what you had last year. And how we look at that as a financial benchmark is how that unassigned, or what's truly available to spend compared to your annual expenditures. So that's the bottom percentage there on that first page. So you'll see that that's at 48.9%. It's gone down a little bit over the last couple of years, but that's actually higher than what we usually see it as. The city policy is to have that at 22.5% to 27.5%. So you're well above that policy. And our general recommendation, the GFOA's general recommendation, is to have that about 70, or, sorry, 25% to 33%. So you're a little bit above that, or well above that, but you're at a good level as far as having funds available to, you know, for those unknown circumstances that might occur. So those were the main points I wanted to go over with the general fund. If there aren't any questions, or if there are some that we'll go over at the end, I'll just continue to move forward. On page number two, item number three, this is other kind of non-general fund, fund balances. So they're called your special revenue funds, is that first type in item number three. So these are considered kind of self-sustaining funds. So you have certain activities going in here, certain fees or intergovernmental grants going in here to pay for certain expenditures. And in all of these, this is just the ending fund balance for the last four years for each of these different funds. You don't really see any major fluctuations from last year to this year. So, you know, you're kind of, you're adding a little bit to fund balance in some of these funds, but you're building that up to utilize them for that specific purpose in the future. Or, you know, you've had some projects here and there, and they've fluctuated a little bit, but not too many changes there. In item number four, you also report a debt service fund. And so here, this is exactly for that purpose, to either transfer funds in or levy taxes into this fund to pay for your annual principal and interest payments on debt. And so in prior years, you'll see that you had a fund balance, and that was like, that was from premiums on debt issued in the past that built up. And in 2020, you utilized that to prepay some debt principal. And so that's at a zero balance at the end of the year. It's very common to have a zero balance in the debt service fund, because usually you're only putting over there what you need for your principal and interest. In 2020, you ended up paying 2.2 million of GO principal amounts from this fund and about 820,000 of interest was paid. And on your revenue bonds, you paid about 78,000 of principal. And I'll talk a little bit more about debt in the very last section of my summary, which goes over your debt limit and shows where you're at with that. So item number five is your capital projects funds. And here you'll have your capital projects fund where you issue debt to pay for certain capital projects, capital equipment purchases. And generally, this one will be major fluctuations, because you might issue, you usually issue debt one year, and then that's used for the next couple of years for those particular purchases and purposes. So last year in 2019, you issued 8 million of debt, so that the balance went up, and now you've been spending that down in 2019 and 2020. And so there's still the 2.3 million that remains from that to be used for those future capital purchases that you've planned to use that for. The other two funds that you report as a capital projects funds are TID number five and TID number six. And so these are newer funds, newer tax increment districts, and it is very common that these will have deficits in the beginning, the beginning of the life of these funds, because you're putting in that economic development costs to spur the economic development and to regain that in tax increment in the future. You'll see that TID number five did have deficits the last three years, and you have now in 2020 recovered all your costs that you've put into it so far and have a positive $146,000 balance there. And in TID number six, you'll see that you had quite a bit of economic development costs in 19 that caused a $183,000 deficit, and already you've really brought that deficit down quite a bit to a $16,000 deficit. And so that's expected to be recovered, you know, in future tax, with future tax increments. Then we look at three other activities that are reported as component units for the city, and that's the joint library, the St. Croix Business Park and Community Access Board. And so you'll see these are just the ending fund balances again, or net position, and no major changes really from 2019 to 2020. The last two funds that you report separately are your enterprise funds, which is your water utility, or, I shouldn't say last two, water utility, sewer utility, and then you have the parking utility, and there's still some ambulance activity going on. But your main ones here on this next page, three, is the water utility. And here we do provide a little bit more detail on the balance sheet, but a lot of the balance sheet changes from year to year are truly just changes at year-end, fluctuations maybe when things are paid from one year to another year, the next year. So what I'll focus on here is actually the bottom folded lines of this section, and the change in net position and that current ratio. And so you'll see that the change in net position was negative 343,000. So overall, your expenditures exceeded your revenues in 2020. Your operating income from true operations of the water utility was actually a positive 150,000. But there, then you also have your tax equivalent that's paid over to the general fund that offsets some of that operating income. You have obviously gone through another rate case, and so that, we do expect that to kind of turn around, you know, going into the future with those new rates going into effect. And one odd thing in 2019 that I did want to point out, because it was so high, you had a 1.4 million increase in net position, is that 2019 included some developer contributed capital in sale of the old meter building that you had. So those were some unique instances that occurred last year, causing that major change. But what we do look at as a benchmark of the financial stability of this type of fund for the water utility is that current ratio. And so what that is, is your current assets to your current liabilities. So what you have in cash and readily available receivables to pay for your current accounts payable and other current liabilities. And so you want that to be at least a one-to-one ratio, and you'll see that you're at 14.3. So you obviously have enough resources, readily available resources in your water utility to pay for the current liabilities in that utility. When we get down to the sewer fund, you'll see kind of the same summary at the bottom, same benchmarks that we look at here. And here, a little different story for the change in net position, is that it increased 1.1 million. And so this is an effect of some new rates that went into effect in 2019 and have come full circle in 2020. In addition, in 2019, there were some additional expenditures for repairs and maintenance that occurred. So that caused expenditures to be a little bit higher during the year, and you didn't see those repeat expenditures in 2020. So that is why you had the positive change in that position. Again, the current ratio we look at in this reporting fund, and so you'll see that this actually went down quite a bit from 18 in 2019 to 3.6 in 2020. But that is just because you have some current payables at the end of the year for your water, your wastewater treatment plant. So you'll see that your payables, your current liabilities, right there is 1.1 million compared to 270,000 that it usually is. So that's kind of a planned spend-down of some available resources that you have in the sewer, the sewer utility anyway, for that wastewater treatment plant. And so you're still above the one-to-one ratio that we're looking for, and I'll expect, I expect that next year that will increase once, you know, because you won't have the same amount of payables going into, or at the end of next year. Then the last enterprise funds that you report on the top of page four, as I mentioned before, is the parking utility and then the ambulance service. And so here you'll see, we just provide a few key pieces of information for each of these. And the parking utility, you will see that your change in net position was a negative 110,000, and it has been negative the last couple, few years. However, that is because that net position or fund balance, if you want to equate it to that, was built up over time, and now you are utilizing some of those resources to improve some of the infrastructure in that fund. And so when I, we don't have a current ratio summarized here, but as a calculation or comparison to what I mentioned in the water utility and sewer utility, the current ratio for the parking utility is 7.8 in the prior year and 1.3 in the current year. So it is above, it is above the one-to-one ratio that we had looking for, however, it has decreased a bit. So we'll just continue to keep an eye on that to make sure that, obviously, the income and revenues that you have coming into this fund are, can cover the costs that you have in this operation. And then for the ambulance service, you'll see that, obviously, in 2019, with the discontinued service in October of 2019, your numbers, the amount, the balances decreased quite a bit last year, and now they're, they've decreased again this year, and that's expected to close out in 2021 with some finalization of certain things. And so you'll, you'll see that continue to close out. The positive change in net position of 21,000 was just some additional collections that you were able to get on that and minimal expenditures, obviously, with that activity. So then that wraps up all the different funds that you report and activities that you report. And so as I mentioned earlier, the last thing that we like to close out with is your long-term obligations. And so this not only includes your debt, outstanding debt that you have, but then some employee benefit-type obligations that have accrued too. So what you see here at the top of this section is the general obligation debt. And so this is backed by your tax levy. And you'll see that your total balance, your total general obligation, notes and bonds, is $20 million at the end of 2020. And every city, village, school district, county, and the state has a debt limit that is, for the city, it's 5% of its equalized value. So you'll see at the bottom of this section what you are utilizing 17.5% of your overall debt limit for the city. And so the average that we see for municipalities in northwest Wisconsin is about 40%. So you're well over that, or well under that percentage. And so you're sitting well there, you have some capacity to, you know, to issue more debt if you wanted to. You'll see that it decreased from last year, because obviously, last year you issued the $8 million, and now you've paid some of that off. So the balance has gone down, and your equalized value increased. So then the second section of that is your mortgage revenue bonds. And so these are backed by those revenues coming into your water utility or sewer utility, depending on what the bonds were issued for. So you'll see there that you don't have any sewer utility revenue bonds, but you do have the water utility revenue bonds that were issued within the last couple of years for your water treatment plant and the new water tower. And so that is, you're paying that down now. And so that balance at the end of 2020 was 1.574 million. So then, as I mentioned, as the final thing that we like to show in this section is your other long-term obligations besides outstanding debt, and that is the estimated amount of vacation, sick leave, comp time-type items that your employees have earned as of 12/31/2020 that will be paid out into the future. And so you'll see that that did increase from last year, and it's estimated at about $600,000 balance there. And that is overall balance, so that does include not only general city employees, but also water utility, public works employees as well. So that encompasses all employees of the city, estimated balance. So as I said, these are the highlights that we think are the key pieces of financial information for you to know and for us to communicate to you, for you to have a good understanding of the high-level overview of the results for 2020. Are there any questions, or?
Anybody? Guess not. Did a great job.
Well, thank you, and have a good evening, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Bye.
All right. Public hearings, a public hearing on applications received for the available reserved Class B beer and Class B liquor license. This is a public hearing, and what that means is that anybody that has anything to say about this, step up to the mic, or if you're on Zoom, just let, just, I guess, hit your, raise your hand on Zoom.
There's no one on Zoom.
Pardon me?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom, okay, thanks, Aaron. All right, so if anybody here is present that would like to make a comment on this, you can step up to the mic, identify yourself, please. Please keep your comments as short as possible and try not to repeat other people's comments. Is there anyone here that would like to comment on this? Anyone that would like to comment? Anyone like, that would like to comment?
Move the calls to public hearing.
Somebody just raised their hand.
I was wondering if you're asking applicants if they want to say something for...
Yeah.
Yep, yes.
Yes, we would, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Don Palm, I'm president of the Three Tradesmen. And I'm here tonight with Sean Murray and other of our partners in Three Tradesmen to request approval for the request we have for our liquor license for a 75-seat, upper-scale steakhouse in the Plank Gerard Development at 402nd Street in downtown Hudson. I've been a resident here in Hudson since 1999. I'm here with my wife Kaye, we've had three daughters that we raised in Hudson, they all went Hudson School Districts. And I've wanted to own a piece of downtown since I've been here. I started a food ingredient manufacturing business, though, with a partner, Ed Newville, who's also a Hudson resident, and developed a lot of neighborhoods in the Hudson area. We did that in 2005, and it's grown tremendously, we have a lot of success, but it's time for me to focus on other endeavors, put some energy into something else, and that's really the reason for the request tonight. So I'm here also representing our third partner, Mike Heffler. Most of you should know Mike as a developer designer of restaurants in the Twin Cities area. He also owns, designed and built, the half-building down where Lolo's is. So we've got a good team here. With that, I'll turn it over to Sean, he can talk a little bit about his background and a little bit more about our concept.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Don. Thank you, I'd like to thank the city of Hudson for the opportunity for the liquor license. My name is Sean Murray, I've been in the restaurant industry for 37 years, 10 of which I've been a restaurant consultant. Building a restaurant in Hudson has been a dream of mine for four years. Nowhere else do you find a more beautiful river town so close to the Twin Cities. The intimate downtown is a special place for restaurants that add to that experience. I've been coming to Hudson for 20 years just for the restaurant experience. Our concept is one you should be very familiar with. Supper clubs have been a staple in Wisconsin since the 1930s. We aim to bring back that nostalgia with our building materials, leather furniture, brushed brass accents, marble, mahogany wood bar tops. Every detail from our crystal glassware to flatware will be scrutinized to match that era. You'll find everything from locally sourced wagyu steaks, jumbo shrimp cocktails, fresh seafood flown in daily. We have partnered with some of the best vendors in the area to bring this to fruition. Our menu might seem high-end, but it's not overpriced. We want our restaurant to be accessible to most. Our goal is to be the epicenter for holiday parties, birthdays, special occasions, and date nights. Like I mentioned before, I've been in the industry for 37 years, and I will bring that experience with me each day as a general manager to make this restaurant just not only one of the best in Hudson, but the best in the Midwest. Would like to take any questions, if anybody has any?
Anybody?
It's a public hearing.
Can we answer or ask questions?
Sure.
What's your timeframe, then? I mean, if you're working with Gerard?
Correct.
Because you're going to level the building and repurpose it, or what?
So, good question. We had originally gone in and we wanted to buy the three lots and develop it ourselves. We had originally gone in and we wanted to buy the three lots and develop it ourselves and bring in partners to make it into a bigger concept. Right now, the, they want to do a different concept, which is in there. They want to bring in some apartments. I think it's, it's already been approved two years ago. They have space for us in a restaurant. That's Plan A. We also have a Plan B, which is over in the, the Hafe building. Breaking ground would be in the spring of next year.
And are you leveling it or?
It would be leveled. The whole, all three of those lots would be, would be gone. Correct.
So you're, this is a, it's a little different for me since I've been here, but you don't own, currently own a building for the restaurant?
Well, I'll let, I'll let Don step in with this, he's more the finance.
Yeah, when we, when we actually signed up for the application, we were in discussions with Gerard to buy that property. And the idea was always to level it and grow. We've looked, in the last year we've been working with this, we've looked at a place at Locust and we've looked at a place on Second Street as well, just down the block. So the intent really was always to get a property, but it's chicken and egg a little bit. If you want a liquor license, you want to open a place that needs a liquor license to buy a property. So, you know, we had a little bit of a timeframe issue. Gerard was actually a perfect alternative because they already have development underway, so we could slip right in. But as Sean had said, we've got Plan B with half that we can walk right in there at any time in their property. Now, they want to be respectful to their tenants. And so that's why we're talking about groundbreaking, because they're, we would actually build on their property to the north. But we could also go into the, into the current building if the tenants were accepting it. So we have, we have lots of options, I guess, is what we're saying.
How long do we hold, allow somebody to hold liquor license? And I know that's kind of a, but, but I mean at the outset, what is the time limit on that? What's the start Becky, under the ordinance, is it?
It's 1:45, 12, 1:45, yeah, I got it right here, actually. Timely startup and continuation of business, 90-day startup and continuation of business. Timely start and continuation of business is ongoing condition of the alcohol license. And then the common council may revoke, cancel or renew the, or not renew the license if granted. And they can come back and ask for an extension for 90-day period.
Yeah, I've seen that happen. My, my question is what is the premises here that the council is approving a license for? I mean, it's, we have 402nd Street, which is a scuba shop, which is identified in the application. That's owned by Gerard. Gerard is not an applicant. And do you have a lease for that space as of yet? Do you have a?
We don't have a lease, but as we understand the location, the owners of the restaurant have to have the license. So Gerard couldn't invite one unless they were owning the location. We would be the owners of that facility or the, the location that houses the restaurant. So we're thinking condo essentially out of the development.
How many liquor licenses do we have?
Overall?
I mean, no right now available?
One.
Just the one?
Yep.
Two applicants?
Yep. And this one is a brand-new one, so it's, comes with a $10,000 initial fee because it, based on our population growth, it allowed us to get, gain one more. So it's not replacing any current or one that was surrendered. It's a brand-new one.
And as we understand, there are some, there are some liquor licenses out there that aren't being utilized as well under the same condition we talked about, where they're in development to the previous projects being made.
Those are assigned to buildings that already exist and projects that are already underway.
Can I ask you gentlemen, thanks for coming first of all tonight. If you did not get the liquor license, how would that like affect your business plan?
I would cancel the plan basically. We've been, we've been talking about this and talking to Becky about the progress and what, what is available for liquor licenses. Because again, as I said, that really is really just starting for the business. So, you know, even with the development with Gerard, we're not sure how that would impact how much space they would use for apartments versus commercial versus restaurants.
So it's pretty much vital to the, the plan, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
You can't really open a restaurant with cocktails and green wine with a liquor license.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, any other questions here? I think what we're going to do is the other applicant here? All right, anybody speaking on their behalf tonight? No? All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on, on the applications that are before us? Anybody else? Any other comments?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, public hearing is closed. All right, so we've got two applicants in front of us. Keys, we know has been here before and they have tried to get a license, I think, a couple of different times. First time, I think there were three applicants.
Yeah, and that was before my time. I know they've been here once. They do currently have just beer only. They don't have full, the full liquor currently.
Jeff, have there been any concerns with Keys, with their beer and wine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, speaking of, I don't know how the, the Hudson House is going to move forward, but do they have to surrender that license at some point?
So I just spoke with them as well into last week and so they, you know, gave them the 90-day continuation of business, the timely startup and cancellation, and they are aware of the surrender. There is the cha, you know, the city, you guys have the decision to make, you don't have to utilize it either. I mean, people can apply, I have to, I have to publish to say it's available if and when they surrender, or if we have it at council to say what you guys want to do with that license after their 90 days. But you don't have to act on it either. You can sit on it too, it's up to its council decision.
What's the square footage of your building and how many tops?
30 by 60 and we go by seats, so it'd be 75 seats.
Including the bar?
Yeah, it's restaurant and then the bars, the bars small.
And has the plan, or has community development seen your plan as far as parking? Mike?
Well, we don't have a parking plan for it. Gerard's having stuff there, I mean, it's starting to get ready for a neighborhood meeting, so that's the first step in the process, I'm pretty sure.
I can say with that development, with Gerard's development, there are spaces allocated to it and we will get some of those spaces as well. So we looked at parking, we've looked at the mitigation plan. And then of course with Half's, there's parking there and we would also incorporate parking into that development.
From what I've seen of the Gerard plan though, I don't know that the excess would cover the need for 75 seats, because that's pretty much dedicated to their, to their apartment units. On the other hand, if you go in there, that will reduce the number of apartment units, right?
Exactly.
Correct.
And as we understand, there's a 50% allowance, so we would, we would take some of those and that mitigation would be addressed.
All right, so I, has anybody here heard, Mike, have you heard anything from Gerard's on this?
I can't speak to Gerard on it.
You haven't heard anything from them though, have you?
That's all I asked them, they said, yeah, they were aware of the application, but that was a sensitive.
All right, so the last we've seen, the proposal from them is preliminary, but it had, it did not allow for, for this. I haven't heard anything from them. What was your other, your other location?
The half building. So where Mike, Mike is with Lolo's and Kelly Eric.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. They own that though. And they own space to the north that would allow for a 30 by 60 restaurant.
Well, traffic congestion down there and then traffic congestion on, what is this, commercial street? That's would be an issue.
And second?
Yeah. Second commercial or do we have more of traffic down by the half building? Which I don't think when we did approve Lolo's, it did not come to fruition, the big traffic jams that we saw. We got lucky, it worked out.
Yep.
But I don't know how many more we could put down there or... I, I like the concept, people have been wanting a steakhouse in Hudson a long time.
Well, that's why we're talking about it, because we live here too.
But a lot of it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse and I know that you're trying to get the liquor license nailed down to move the project forward, so.
But you can appreciate, I mean, you know, the houses that are the buildings that we've bid on, you know, we're talking six, 700,000 dollars. It's hard to go into that without a liquor license or any kind of guarantee or even promise of liquor license. So you really can't do that. So we've, we've developed agreements with folks like Gerard's that, hey, if we build it, if you build it, we will come, but we can still get the liquor license.
Lots of, yes, I mean, we've had a lot of applicants come in, they've given us plans to look at and direction and now we hear that Gerard doesn't really know what's going on. Kind of a red flag there.
Well, they, we know, we, we've dealt with them too, so we understand, that's why we're trying to deal with that.
Well, Gerard's a good partner with the city, they have been pretty really good and so has Half at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, I have a concern about it.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, I like the concept too, but I don't think you're far enough on the, in your planning. I'm going to make the motion to grant Keys the liquor license. They're in my district, they've shown persistence and, and they've been a good neighbor in, in that area, so I think that they deserve to have that liquor license.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I think it's a tough call. I think, the thing I'm thinking is what's best for Hudson overall? And it seems like, it seems like a new business downtown, offering something kind of unique, you know, bringing more jobs to downtown. I, I, I think that's, that would be a positive for the town. Keys is great too, have nothing, nothing against Keys, awesome business. Just seems like a liquor license might fit the steakhouse concept better than the restaurant with Keys. So also, they don't have a, something going though, right? So I guess my question is maybe back to you Becky, is that if we went with the steakhouse concept and it, for whatever reason, didn't go through, what's the timing on when the city could, could pull that or something?
According to the ordinance, it's the 90 days. I mean, it's reviewable at the 90-day stage.
So if you got three months, we'd come back?
Right.
You do, and I, and I think you've got a couple of issues here with a preliminary concept. And, you know, number one, you have to issue a permit for a particular premises. And we don't know what the premises is yet. We have a concept for the Gerard development, we have a concept potentially for the, the Hafe building, but we don't know exactly what that, that premises is. Secondarily, you don't know what construction's going to look like. You don't know what the approvals are going to look like and we know that that's a whole process that the developer's going to have to go through, that as Mr. Johnson indicated, they're just starting that process, they're at the very beginning. So to think that they would be through it and these folks could begin to utilize their license within 90 days probably doesn't fit with the, with the timeline. So just in terms of overview of how things fit together, you know, the concept may be very desirable, but when you look at, at your ordinance and when you look at, you know, how this all works together, it's really very challenging to, to consider approving a, a permit for a, a concept that isn't specifically defined at this point. The other thing I would remind the council, and you have the ordinance in your, in your packet, 145-11, there are a number of considerations that the ordinance lists out as to what the council should look at in determining whether a, a license should be, should be issued. Things like the number of employees and the creation of new jobs, expansion of tax base, the adequacy of parking, adverse impacts on the proposed premises, number of establishments in, in the area proximity of the proposed license or business to other alcohol beverage licensed establishments, potential future needs for, for licenses and any other relevant criteria. So those are the things that you should be thinking about when you think about making this decision and either choosing between one of the two or, you know, deciding that you want to hang on to that, that license and there's nothing that forces you to issue it at this point just because it's available. So those are your, your options.
If, if I could add into that, thank you for pointing those out, Mr. Vivian. I, with bringing the voice of District 5 here, I have heard from several residents and business owners who have concern about another liquor license in the downtown area for some of those safety issues and for parking issues that you mentioned. And so that is why I wouldn't be able to support this one. That is what my residents and businesses that are in the area that I serve have asked me to do.
I'd like to postpone, I'd move the table this for a month, see if they could come back with some kind of a plan. And maybe a Gerard conversation could be had in between that. I don't know if that supersedes Joyce's motion.
Well, it does, it's not debatable, so his motion to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That's four votes? All right, and opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, motion to table is approved and that was for a month?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I guess if you could work with community development, Mike, we need to see some plans, we need to know that Gerard is on board with this and then the parking and how that would affect.
We have met with Mike initially when we were looking at doing this. We've driven, we've drawn up at least three different plans with Mike. This is something we've been working on for a year and we have it pretty dialed in and it's something we could easily get done pretty quick.
Yeah, in a month. Real quick, what are the other restaurants that you have built?
So with Hafe Group, I, I built Junction 70 and Cottage Grove and that was basically taking it from dirt to mortar. That was a $3.3 million project. We generated the first, right off the bat, we were doing 60,000 a week in sales. Our food to beverage ratio was about 70/30. We, our business was done after 10 o'clock. We made, the majority of our business was all between 11 a.m. and 10 p.m. We didn't have any, we're not looking at doing any DJs, maybe a live music here and there, but we're, this is dinner music that we're looking at. I know everybody has concerns about the liquor license and the issues, especially when you look at what happened with COVID, you know, this last summer here. We're not that type of place. I've run those type of places before. We're, we're a dinner club, we're a supper club. You know, business is pretty much done after 10 o'clock. Food-driven, chef-driven. You know, I'll be managing the place. I, you know, I've been doing this for 37 years. I know what works, what doesn't work. You know, I don't want, for myself and for my employees, I just want to run a great dinner restaurant. I want to be, you know, known in the Midwest as one of the best restaurants. So your concerns are noted, but I also have those concerns. We can make our money off our food and the drinks are a part of it. You know, you go into a supper club, the old-fashioned, the Manhattans, you know, good wine that goes with food. And it's just important, you know, without the liquor license, we can't move forward. So.
Look at that, and you've done your labor market study because every restaurant in town is hiring.
Yeah, it is. And that's, you know, my clients, I have clients everywhere from Tucson, Arizona to Duluth, I've new seen a cafe. We, you know, Patty Ryan's is another client of mine. That's all we're talking about every day is just hiring. And you just have to be, you have to be a place where you know how to draw in employees, where you know how to take care of and retain employees and you have to take care of them. That's additionally, not only is your management style have to be appreciative, but you're, you're paying them well. But the best are going to always win on this. The people that aren't doing a good job are going to lose. The bad organizations are going to fail.
Right. It's just, it's tough out there right now for everybody.
It is, it is.
Hospitality, I'm in it, I get it. So like I say, a month would be great.
All right, well, one of the comments that I was going to make before this got tabled is that, you know, there's, there's, obviously we're looking at, at the Hudson House, we have no idea what's We have no idea what's coming in there, so we don't know if they are gonna be looking for that liquor license to stay on that premises. But, uh, the other one is the Nova. You know, how long has the Nova been closed for? And, uh, and I would think, you know, Becky or, you know, your staff should be checking in to-
We're working on it.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, potentially, there are two liquor licenses here. And, uh, and I understand what was going on with Keys. Uh, they have, I think they've made three attempts at this, and I think their first attempt went to, uh, Jonesy's, and the next one went to the, uh, or one of them anyway, went to, uh, movie theater. So, anyway, um, they've been at it for a long time, and, uh, I can understand both sides of this issue, but keep in mind that we might have two liquor licenses available in addition to what we're talking about right now.
Becky, what about another license based on our population? What, what's your expectation there?
Uh, it goes by per thousand, and we just, just barely got over that to open this one up, so, I, based on growth.
So, we'd need five hundred more residents approximately in order to get another-
Well, it's like, we're like five over the thousand, so we like need quite a few. So, it'll be a little bit yet.
Well, it's, I thought it was a liquor, a new liquor license for every five hundred-
It's for every thousand.
It's every thousand residents? I thought it was five hundred. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And how long has it been since the last one was issued?
You know, I didn't look. I was gonna look that up, and I didn't. I don't have that right in front of me.
No problem, no problem.
Well, the movie theater must have been two years ago, three years ago, maybe?
I was gonna say three. I don't know. I'm not certain.
It was just before COVID.
It was right before COVID hit, yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, well, thank you guys for being here. Appreciate it. Uh, you know, we'll be taking it up again in a month, so look forward to seeing it again.
Very good.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, discussion, possible action regarding, uh, I'm sorry, public hearing regarding adoption of special assessments for 2020 sidewalk replacement project for five-seventeen Second Street property. This is, once again, this is a public hearing, and if there's anybody here that would like to make a comment, please step up to the mic, identify yourself, keep it brief, and try not to repeat things that other people have said. Uh, is there anyone here who would like to comment on this? Anyone who has a comment? Anyone who has a comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action regarding adoption of special assessments for the 2020 sidewalk replacement project for five-seventeen Second Street property. Bean?
Good evening, council. Uh, just really briefly, uh, uh, we adopted special assessments for the 2020 sidewalk replacement project about a month ago. Uh, kind of as the project went on, one of the properties, actually two of the properties that, uh, we were going to assess, ended up splitting into fourteen properties, and so this is just changing the special assessments to apply to those properties. So, just splits the, the special assessments equally for those new, we'll call them child properties. So, uh, that's all we're looking for tonight.
Anybody? Questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion?
Oh, wait a minute. This is a resolution.
It's a res, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt Resolution Twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Second.
Got a motion second to adopt. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Uh, let's see, this is, uh, we're into citizen comments. Thank you. Uh, this is an opportunity for anybody here to comment on anything that is not currently on the agenda. If you have anything to say, please come forward. Uh, again, identify yourself. Uh, if there is something, uh, that you'd like to comment that's on the agenda, it's possible for one of the council members, uh, to make a motion to, uh, hold this, hold, uh, that agenda item over for a public hearing, at which time you could speak on that. Uh, and if you would, please keep your comments brief and try not to repeat. Do we have anybody on Zoom, Aaron?
Nope, we do not, and we don't do public comments on Zoom either, citizen comments.
Oh, that's right. I'm, I'm sorry.
Nope.
All right. Anybody here have a comment? Any comments? Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Uh, discussion, let's see, um, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Approve the request by St. Croix Sailing School to extend the lease of the space at eighteen Buckeye Street, beginning November first, twenty-twenty-one, through April first, twenty-twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Consent agenda is approved. Uh, unfinished business is interview candidates who applied for upcoming vacancy of District Four council seat, followed by discussion of possible action.
And it should be noted that, um, Mike did send out a couple of questions, just as something the council can use if they wish, um, since we don't really have a format set up, so...
All right, uh, the candidates here? One of them, just one? Okay. Come on forward, identify yourself, please.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Sammy Ditloff. I live on twenty-four seven, uh, twenty-four-seven Highland Circle. Um, I guess, what questions do you have for me? Is that a good place to start? I'm not really sure. I did send in a letter of intent and my resume, and tried to be pretty detailed, but happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody?
Sammy, just, uh, could you talk just briefly about kind of, um, you know, uh, what you see as priorities for Hudson, or what you see as, you know, how you see yourself serving the city and whatnot?
Sure thing, yeah. So, I am a relatively new resident to Hudson. I moved here earlier this year, and that was something that I know I covered in my letter of intent as well. Uh, one thing that I think is really valuable as being a new resident is having a fresh set of eyes on everything that's going on in the city. Uh, as a marketer, when I go into a new client, it's really valuable when I don't have a clear view of everything. I can ask those questions and dig deeper into things and try to understand things from their perspective so that I can translate it to the people that they're trying to reach. So, for me, I'm kind of viewing it, my asset in, in that regard, uh, for this position. Um, in terms of priorities, I would say, you know, I want to make sure that the seat is occupied by someone first and foremost. And then also, you know, keep picking up where Jim is going to be leaving off, whatever timing that might occur. I know that there's big budget discussions, uh, conversations about changing the way that we're, you know, budgeting for roads. That's something that I would like to, you know, be able to support in whatever way I can. Uh, personally, you know, accessibility is a really big priority for me. So, looking at things in terms of accessibility, both in, with access to information, um, accessible roads, accessible trails, uh, things like that are, are definitely important to me. Uh, I'm excited about the diversity committee that has started, so would love to support, uh, in any way that I can. I know that Paul's leading that up. Uh, and then Marion recommended me for the Bike and Pedestrian Committee a couple of months ago. Not sure if that has gone through or not, but that's something that I would love to, um, support as well, regardless if I'm appointed or not. That's something I would, I would like to help with.
Other questions?
And Sammy, I, I'm having trouble finding you here, sorry. Uh, you have some experience with, um, was it a county board, or if I forget what it is?
Oh, yeah, so I was the membership chair for the Bayview Neighborhood Association for two years. So, I lived in Bayview for about a decade, and, uh, for a couple of those years, I was on the Neighborhood Association. So, my role was helping with, we had a membership program in the neighborhood for, uh, residents where they would get a card, and it would, um, give them discounts at different local businesses. So, I both worked with small businesses to figure out what kind of program they want to offer, and then with residents and figuring out, you know, like getting people signed up for the membership. So, we had community events through the summer, uh, concert series, different things like that, and I'd be present at each one of those to try to get more people involved. And then we also had, um, some bigger budgets that we were saving for to kind of figure out bigger community projects that we could do with, with, um, you know, board discussion and also community feedback.
And for those of you who don't know, Bayview is a community within the city of Milwaukee. It's not a ci, a municipality on its own.
Correct, yeah. It's a neighborhood just south of downtown Milwaukee.
Sammy, if, um, if you were to serve in this capacity, have you thought about what would be some of the very first things you would do if you was, were appointed?
I mean, for me, you know, I'm kind of a born, like, researcher at, at heart. So, one thing I do want to do is just dig in even more to some of the things that I haven't gotten a chance to read, like all of the ordinances, all of that good stuff. Um, and then, you know, really, like I said, accessibility is really important to me. I want to make sure that information is easy to access for everybody, so that would kind of be a way that I would be looking at the things that I would be familiarizing myself with.
Is it Samantha or Sammy, or what do you go by?
Um, Sammy is great. Samantha's my legal name.
Do you, uh, you understand the municipal government is supposed to be nonpartisan?
Yes.
So, would you keep, uh, pounding in national views in this kind of organization, or would you leave that out of here and concentrate on, like, what you said, roads, bike paths, things like Jim was trying to accomplish?
Yeah, for me, you know, local priorities are really important, and I, you know, I don't necessarily see myself as somebody who's just going to align in one way or another. I like to think about all of the things at play and then make a decision based on that information.
We've had some contentious arguments. How do you negotiate? How are your skills as far as negotiating?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've been on a lot of committee boards and organizations and things like that, and have had to work with people that I don't necessarily agree with a hundred percent of the time. You know, for me, it's more important about reaching a solution that works for as many people as possible. Um, so, I, I try to keep the personal side out of things.
It's not always easy to do, as you probably see. Yeah, and, you know, you're supposed to have fun when you're doing this, too.
Yes.
At least that's what the League of Municipalities said when I went to class a few years back.
Yeah.
Fun's kind of left the building on every level right now. So, hopefully, you could probably bring in a sense of humor.
Oh, I, you know, I did work at The Onion for a couple of years, so...
That's why I saw, that's why I said that. You knew where I was going with it.
Yes, yes, I had a feeling.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is, anybody? So, I, I apologize. You're, I, I missed the address. I know that it's on the, on the application. I'm trying to bring it up here. I'm having a hard time with this, uh, iPad, but, uh, are you in, are you located in the new? Have you just looked at the map? Do you know? Are you located in the new District Four?
I have looked at the map. I'm not in the new District Four. I believe I'll be in District Three once those change.
Okay. All right, um, anybody else? Yes, uh, yeah. Paul just asked me, if you don't mind if I say, Paul just asked me if we asked about redistricting. Uh, she does not live in the new District Four. Okay. She'll be in District Three. Um, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh...
I have questions about process and legal.
Yep.
Um, seeing how there's one candidate that's here, Jim has offered to stay till the thirtieth. Why don't we open this up and keep it open for the new people in this, in the new district that's probably gonna get approved and not appoint right now? District Four is being represented by someone in this room, which is the mayor who resides in District Four. So, I don't know why we're rushing to do this one. And I, I would like to see, nothing against you, Samantha, but I'd like to see if other candidates would throw their hat in the ring, especially with, because she's not gonna be in that district, so...
Right.
Kind of unfair to you, but that's the process that's happening right now as far as the new district. So, it is being represented right now by Jim and by mayor, as far as I'm concerned. I think we should open it up further. And for that reason, I'm not sure I would participate in the vote tonight.
Okay.
Jim, what are your thoughts? Is Jim still here?
Jim? Jim?
Is, is Aaron still here? Are we still having a Zoom link going on?
Aaron?
Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I can hear Jim. Jim, try again.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Jim.
All right. Well, that's, uh, Randy, that's an interesting point you bring up, uh, but, uh, I think someone who's more focused on District Four would be a little bit more is probably better. Uh, not, nothing against the mayor, but he has to represent the whole city and take all that into account. Um, I happen to have met Sammy several months ago, um, and, uh, have had a number of conversations with her about different things. And, uh, I'm disappointed that she would not be able to be in the, in District Four, uh, at, for the next election, because she is a, an excellent candidate, very involved, very high energy. Uh, just, and I, and I, Randy, I think she would be a lot of fun, too, just from the conversations that, that we've had. So, uh, she would bring a, another, uh, element to, uh, the, uh, council that I probably don't bring a lot of fun to the council, so that's just not who I am. But, uh, I think would, would do us a good job. If we get the process started, um, it would take away any thought of having to have a special election, uh, which the council could, uh, could possibly, would easily be voting on. And we know we had concerns about this process and, uh, going into a special election. So, this would take that away and would make, uh, the twenty-twenty-two election process the only one we have to worry about. There may be candidates, uh, there are some, some new areas, uh, from District, what, District Two, I guess, or people from District Two that are possibilities, uh, that are gonna be in District Four, at least as far as I can read the map. But, uh, I'm not counting on that. So, I, I, my thoughts would be to go ahead and, uh, is the, am, am I incorrect in believing that the other candidate is not here?
That, that's right. She's not here.
Then I think we should, my, 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 uh, I, I assume I'm not allowed to vote on this, but my opinion would be that, uh, the council should move ahead and appoint Sammy to that position. Uh, it'll give her a good grounding, uh, it'll make Paul run a little harder next time.
Maybe we can split it, Jim.
Who said you didn't have a sense of humor?
My wife.
Yeah, as I see it, so, this is my understanding, we opened up a public process, um, seeking all applicants from District Four who were interested in, in, uh, basically, um, fulfilling the rest of Jim's term. We had two candidates apply. Uh, I thought Sammy's, um, application was- I thought Sammy's application was excellent. I thought her letter of intent was excellent. I thought she handled the questions well here tonight. I don't think we got a lot of information from the other candidate, unfortunately, either in writing or in person. So I think that's the process. And at this point, even though she's not in District Four, I think it'd be a great perspective for the city to have for essentially four months is what we're talking about. Not to do a special election, I think, is important to fill that seat before District Four completely changes to a completely new geographic area. So I'm supportive. I think we should move forward and do some voting tonight.
I agree. I think that having a dedicated representative for District Four is really important for these next four or five months. And so I agree that we should go forward and vote.
You know, I'm going to repeat, I guess, what I said in the past, and this is, has absolutely nothing to do with the candidates at all. So it's not a reflection on the candidates. And I think that at least, you know, you showed up tonight and I thank you for that and I think you did a good job. On the other hand, I do not believe that the council should be in the position to be appointing another council member. Nobody here in this council, with the exception, as Randy pointed out, of me, represents that district. And I don't think it's good to have other council members appointing a council member in a district that they don't represent and, you know, imposing their political will on a district that they don't represent. So I don't like this process. I never have. I'm pretty consistent with that. I've always been against it. And I think that there are other ways to do this. We have left the council seat vacant in the past when we had a vacancy. And I think for probably even longer period of time than what we're discussing right now. And so, you know, I would really, this, you know, we're not going to talk about this tonight, but I think that we should devise a different process if we're going to do this. And I think that having the seat vacant for a few short months isn't all that bad of a thing. And if it goes more than pick a number, you know, maybe then we should be talking about a special election and let the people in the district decide who they want to have represent them. So that's my take on it. I don't have a vote, so, but I don't like the process and I really think that we need to visit this in the future.
I'd like to respond to that. Well, first of all, Jim is elected and to this position and he's made his opinion known. And also, the residents of District Four had the opportunity to make their voices heard. They've chosen not to. So I think that it is, we're, we were elected to do this job. I think that it is our duty to make sure that District Four is represented for the coming months.
I have a question about the next agenda item. So if, lay this out for me, when we approve, or if we approve, the next agenda item, final redistricting ward plan, when does the actual change of the ward go into effect?
With the next election. So when the filing opens for the next election, that's when this, basically this new plan goes into effect as far as here's how you file, here's your wards to file, districts to file, that sort of thing. But the actual setting of the new council person will take effect at that, whatever that second April meeting, I'm not sure what the exact statutory thing is with it. But so I guess it's kind of phased. So the elections will be under the new ward and district plan. And then when the elections are complete and we seat the new council in April, that's when it officially goes into effect, I guess.
Thank you, thank you. You know, sitting here as a person that tried to get appointed, and then went to a special election, that ended up being a little bit longer of a span of time than what the span of time is from now until the election upcoming, or just about equal. You know, I'm kind of of the ilk of having the people of the district voting on a person instead of being appointed by this body. Again, I think I said in the last meeting that that just, it opens it up for politics. So that's kind of where I'm at. And I feel like it could be open for the next, you know, election.
Just to remind the council of the voting requirements, the appointment requirements, Jim is not authorized to vote on any particular motion regarding his replacement. And a replacement to his seat requires four votes, so four out of the five. All right. Just as an aside, I think it's worth noting, this has also been a particular rub for me is that the mayor, not me, but the mayor, is the only person that represents every district in the city and the only one sitting here that can vote on who the replacement's going to be. The only one that actually represents that district. So again, I think this needs to be revisited sometime in the future. All right, so, everybody done? Here's how this goes. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were chiming in there. Here's how this goes, and it might be a little bit different than what we've done in the past because we've got, you may have seen some discussions going on here trying to figure out how we do this. The vote can be, should be, probably, a non-secret ballot. Anyone here can request a secret ballot. And if we do secret ballots, you would still have to, because voting has to be somewhat or potentially public, the outcome. So you would, if we do secret ballots, you would put your name on that ballot and submit it. And then we have Nick and Becky do the counting. And then if any of the candidate, or not candidates, if any of the council members want the ballots to be public, they would make the request and the ballots would then become public. So it's kind of a moot point as to whether we do a secret ballot, I think. Everybody got that? Any questions on that? So what's your pleasure? Anybody want a secret ballot? Okay. All right, so the two candidates. Do you want to repeat their names? I can't, I don't.
So we have Sammy Ditloff and Jeannie Joseph.
Okay, everybody got that? All those in favor of Sammy?
Aye.
Raise your hands, please. Okay. Opposed? All right, three to two does not get the required four ballots. All those in favor of Jeannie? Raise your hand. So neither candidate gets the required ballots. In the past, if we did not have a first ballot winner, we've gone to other ballots. Is there any reason to go to other ballots?
I mean, I guess, I, my only thought, my closing argument, if you will, is this district is being completely phased out. District Four is completely different starting in April. I appreciate your point of you want the people in District Four to make the decision, even though there's, say, four months left. I appreciate that. There's only two people in District Four we've heard from, which are the two candidates. Sammy is a person in District Four. All of us around this table know this is a tough job. You represent people, you listen to constituents. You guys know the drill. There's only one person in the entire district that showed up tonight. One. To me, it's a no-brainer. It's not politics, it's not we're bringing your thing. It's, there's only one person that we know of in the entire District Four that came tonight willing to say, let me represent my district. And to not allow that, I think, is just a sad statement on local government, because local government should be about people who want to participate, who come forward and are rewarded. That's why we put people in the park board, that's why we have citizens involved in all kinds of areas. So to sit there and kind of prove the process as imperfect or to say, we don't have a lot of time here. I don't understand why we don't reward the one person in this room that seems qualified based on what we've seen and is caring enough to come and say, let me do it. I just don't understand that, so.
And spend the time to put together a thoughtful letter of intent and include a resume so that we know as much about her as possible.
And it's only going to be a four-month term, so to speak, because District Four is no longer going to exist. So let's give her a chance and maybe she'll be wonderful and maybe she won't, but the only way you can tell is by giving people a chance.
And I think it's a really important voice of a new resident and their perspective at the table. I think that is something we're missing and would be a nice element to add.
All right, we'll do one more ballot.
One other thing, I think she has pretty extensive public relations background, Sammy, if I'm not right? Am I right about that?
Yeah, well, 15 years in advertising, marketing, PR.
So I know that's something, I've been talking a little bit to Erin Reeves about behind the scenes, but, and I know the newsletter piece that you've been working on, right? We've got a need in the city to do better communication. Why not take advantage of some of those skills for even just a few months to see if there's something that could come out of that? So I just think there's potential. I don't know what it would be, but I just see there's potential that could be good for the city in the next four months. And after that, like District Four is not going to exist, Sammy's not in the new district, so.
Sammy would have to move to.
So I don't think it's a huge risk to say we're going to take Sammy on at this point, so. Thank you for listening.
All right. Everybody ready to go? All those in favor of Sammy? Raise your hand. Opposed? Does not get the four votes. So I guess we just will, at this point, leave this vacant. Okay?
How much does a special election cost?
Well, I think the point being, if we even try to do it, it's going to take us right into the next election anyway.
I'm still going to answer the question. How much does a special election cost?
Don't know. You looking at that, Becky?
I got preliminary numbers when we first started discussing. Hang on, got to find it. Pulling up here. Just for programming costs and ballots and printing, we're looking at, and that does not include notices, poll workers, staff time, we're looking at about $1,400 just for the back, the tabulators I'm using, the county, so that's not staff time or election workers.
What would the timeline be?
Um, that I don't have right offhand. It's, I don't have that right in front of me.
Yeah, I think we did look at it at some point. I think even, Nick, I think maybe Nick even reviewed it a little bit about, you, we have to post for, I think, you know, so many days, it has to be advertised, and then you have to have the election within so many days after and those sort of things. So we'd have to revisit that again, and we can bring it back to the council as well and give you an update on what that would look like. We could get a better cost on actual, you know, for using judges and, you know, kind of everything. We could try to get a more accurate total cost, and then we could also bring the timeline back at the next meeting as well.
Okay.
This is, Jim, I guess I'd say I'm extremely disappointed in both the delay that's occurring now. And Mr. Mayor, I believe it's the council that makes the decision about what we do, not you. Is that correct?
Well, I don't have a vote in it, no, but I'm still running the meeting.
If you go back and review your words, you were saying, oh, we're, this is, we're going to just move on now. So that's inappropriate. So because I do believe the council has the decision about what happens next. And this is, you have a good candidate who can be in there for four to five months and do some good work for, I don't think she's going to do any damage to what's going on. I'm not sure about the hesitancy. If you don't like the process, that's not a reason to not to vote against her, which is basically what I'm hearing, hearing at least one or two people saying that they didn't like the process that we're using. So that's just wrong. We shouldn't be doing that. We should fix the process, but we should actually vote for a candidate who is, appears, has all appearances of being extremely well-qualified to serve this district.
And I'm disappointed that we can't vote to give representation, direct representation to District Four. I think that the residents of District Four deserve to be represented by someone, and we have a candidate who is qualified. Why can't we get that person in here?
All right, so let me put it this way. Does anybody see themselves changing their vote?
And I also want to make very clear that the next agenda item we need to move on to, because that's part of the whole issue.
Yep. All right, Jim, so the two people that voted no have indicated that they do not intend to change their vote. I guess it's just a question of, and I don't know if this is the appropriate way to do it, to ask the council if they want to continue to vote or if we just move on, which is what I thought originally, but, you know, you said it belongs to the council's discretion what to do. You've got two people that aren't going to change their vote, so do you want to stay here all night and continue to ballot, or do you want to move on?
I guess the question is, Bill and Randy, if we had additional candidates, what would it take for you to vote in favor of one of them?
It doesn't matter the amount of candidates. We need to just let this process roll out to April. That's my point.
Bill?
Which is different than what you said earlier.
Jim, are you in Phoenix, Arizona?
Pardon, Randy?
Are you in Phoenix, Arizona?
I'm in Tucson right now, but.
All right, so we're not going to belabor this. I've talked to our council here and he said that it's, that, you know, given the circumstances that we have, that I have the authority to just say we're going to move on and that's what we're going to do.
Well, we'll put the special election in the next agenda.
Yeah.
We'll have the cost in the timeline on the next agenda for you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next item, discussion of possible action to approve Resolution 2421, adopting final ward boundaries.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second?
Got a motion, second to suspend. Roll call.
Harset?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber? Jim?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt the Resolution 2421. Second?
Got a motion, second to adopt Resolution 2421. Discussion?
I'd like to make note that on page 158 of our packet is the map, and the county supervisor districts are, so my area is labeled District Five, it should be labeled District Six. And then the area, so then there's a six over in Randy's district, that should be District Five. So I don't know if that makes any.
You're talking about district or ward?
No, I'm talking about district. No, I'm talking about districts. These are the county supervisor districts. They were mislabeled.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So I want to make sure that we aren't approving something that we aren't intending.
So all we're doing, yeah, so tonight, I'm guessing there was just a mistake on what the county supervisory districts were labeled as, but that does not, we're not approving anything with the county tonight. They were just there to show how we did the reconciliation process, to get our wards and aldermanic districts in line with the county supervisory districts. So what we're approving tonight is the wards, and then the aldermanic districts. So, if it's mislabeled for the county supervisory districts, that doesn't matter, because the county will approve their supervisory districts, based on this very same map, with, I would assume, the corrected district numbers on it, but it doesn't affect what we're approving tonight.
And then in the chart, in the resolution, they are correct, so that should be what we are voting on.
Mm-hmm. You hear everybody good?
And then just a point of information, the polling places, are those, that doesn't list the districts that...
It doesn't. Like, what are you asking, though, about that?
Like, do we know, so the new fire station, for example, do we know which district?
They should be staying, well, the ward, it's by, I don't have it that in front of me either, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Um, it didn't change. All this did, the, so the wards, the same wards are going to be voting at the same polling places. It's just simplifying ballots at this point with the supervisory districts for April.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I really am not certain that that's true. I think you're overloading now, and you got people voting from it. You're going to, half the people in District Two will be voting in a different, different polling place. One of them is going to have to, seems to me is going to have to change, that's, it looks unbalanced to me. So we need to take a real good look at that. And then we're also going to have to do some tremendous communication to those people, particularly the ones in District, in the new District Four. Half of them are going to vote somewhere different.
We will be sending out communications to everybody, just so there's clarification of where their polling place is, and what district they're in.
That's one, I, and I said this before, when I came on the council, it was after one of these changes, and it took two elections before people finally stopped asking me why I wasn't their, why I was their representative, so. Maybe that wasn't, had anything to do with that.
All right. Everybody good? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Next up is the update on the, on the library. There are a couple of different things that people probably, what people are asking about right now. Number one is, when the library might be open again, might reopen publicly. We don't have an answer to that right now. From what I understand, the holdup has to do with carpeting, and it will not be reopened until the carpeting is laid down. We have to do an RFP for the, for the carpeting, and talk to a number of people, I guess, that have, that could be responding to that, and they're kind of tied up with other things. So, it's, it's possible that that RFP might, might not get resolved, or the carpet down until sometime in February. But we're going to try to, to move that along as quickly as we can, and get the carpet down as quickly as we can, so that the library can open. Right? Other than that, what is it, ServPro is going in tomorrow to start cleanup, and I see Mike nodding his head. Is there anything else you wanted to add on that, Mike?
Good evening. So as the mayor stated, ServPro will be starting tomorrow. It's about a two-and-a-half week process. They're going to clean all of the books that were in the area of the glass shards, and after that two-and-a-half week process, obviously, we may resume talks about doing some type of curbside pickup temporarily, until the carpet is replaced in that timeframe, because of the RFP specs, we have to go for bid, just because of the cost of it. So, there is going to be some, like I said, a two-and-a-half week period of cleanup, possibly some curbside until that March date, when this carpet is replaced. So, that's the update I got.
Okay, thanks. The other thing has to do with the funding, and we, as Mike pointed out, you know, with curbside pickup, that can help us a little bit, but everything's being exacerbated with the, with the delay in getting the library open, because our funding level is, is very much determined by the cost of circulation. And without circulation, we don't get reimbursement. So, as Joyce pointed out earlier, the library already is going to be in serious financial trouble, and then all of a sudden, it will be compounded by the fact that we don't have the, the cir coming back our way. So, and that leads me to the next thing. We have been working for months, six, more than that, probably about a year, I guess, trying to figure out ways, scratching our heads, how can we get our funding level so that it's consistent and sustainable? And that has been very problematic, as you know, through the budget process that we have gone through in the past, we have, I think, been very conscientious about making sure that our library is funded, at least from our perspective, to what our level is. I think we've been generous, and we have certainly increased our three-year average significantly. Three-year average is going to come into play here in a minute, with the rest of the conversation. But of course, we also have to work with three other municipalities that are partners in the joint library. And they are all up against levy limits right now, and I think, Joyce, you asked about the partners, if they were going to be, if we knew what they were going to do as far as any type of increase, and for a couple reasons, I don't think we're going to see increases coming from them, perhaps from St. Joe. But we're working with other, other options, perhaps, for at least North Hudson, to maybe help them along. But that gets back into the three-year average. You heard Erin talk about a reduction in, in payment for lease on our part, that will add an additional 50,000, 60,000 to the budget for them. But the funding that we're talking about doing, and it's rather unique, we came upon this idea maybe early summer, and that is to transfer tax authority for funding our library to the county. And so, number one, in order to do that, we had to get the county to agree to do it, which they have. Number two, we wanted to make sure that we, there was not going to be any repercussions from the state, in particular, the State Revenue Department, thinking that we might be proposing this in order to circumvent levy limits. And so, the people that were involved, we, we actually had to get an opinion from the drafter of statutes, who works in Madison, and actually drafts all of legislation, all the wording for legislation. We contacted him first, and worked with us, and he said that the way they drafted the legislation, it allows for this. And we got him together with, with the county council, and they talked through, and he agreed that the language provided for this, it was permissible. But then we wanted to make sure, again, cross our Ts, dot our Is, we went to the Department of Revenue, to get an opinion from the Department of Revenue, to make sure that they weren't going to come back at us, uh, two years from now, and say, you couldn't do this, and you, you know, there's going to be penalties, potentially. That's not usually how they work. They're usually, they want to be corrective, not punitive, but it's possible that they could have done that. So we went to the Department of Revenue, they brought, got the Department of Instruction involved, and we got a letter back from them that, that pretty much allows us to, to move forward with this. All right? Unfortunately, timing wasn't great, because we're all involved in our budgets right now. And so, we want to make sure that everything, all the communication is out there to the municipalities, as well as to the county, and allow the county supervisors to get their information out to their constituencies, and what they're going to do, get an opportunity to take a look at it, and determine how they're going to vote. So we have to have all those votes. We have to have a vote from here, from us, a vote from our partners, a vote from the county, and all that takes time. What does that mean? It means that we didn't get it done, didn't get accomplished what we wanted to, in as timely a fashion as we were hoping, and so, we will not start to implement this until after the first of the year, which has consequences for the budget for the library for 2022. If we were to, and this is just, you know, we talked, I talked with the, with the partners on this, if, if, even if they had money that was available, that they could free up to increase their funding for the library for next year, what it does is increases their 2022 three-year average. Okay? So there's a part that I kind of missed in this, and that is that, when we do this, our levy capacity will be reduced by the amount of money that we last put into the budget. Okay? If we increase that this year, it increases our three-year average, which means that more of our levy capacity will be taken away when we start to implement this. So, we, we don't free up levy capacity, it goes away. But what we know is that going forward, we will have consistency with the funding for the library. They will be fully funded for the first time since probably they entered into the joint library agreement. All right? Everybody, we've, you've heard us talk about the exempt amount that we have to sign off on, that goes to the county, and you all know that everybody was signing off on an exempt amount that wasn't real, that wasn't accurate, and when we found out truly what the exempt amount was, we found that we were underfunding the library by about 50 percent. And that happened back in like, 2011, 2012, at a time when everybody was at levy limits, including the city, and nobody had capacity to get anywhere near that full funding level. So for the first time, the library will be fully funded when we get through this, when we get this processed on, presuming that everybody votes in favor of it, and, and then we go into the next budget cycle next year, where we will no longer have to be worried about funding our library here at our, at the municipal level, and it will all be done at the county, and it will be with the accurate exempt level. Excuse me, could somebody silence that?
It wasn't me. It wasn't me.
I think it was our chief enforcement officer. All right, so, um...
So, Mr. Mayor, do you have a timeline on what you're thinking in terms of when it would go to the different?
Right after the first of the year, we're going to start.
Okay.
Okay? Get through this budget cycle, and right after the first of the year, we're going to go through it. And, and by the way, the conversations I've had with the heads of all the municipalities, partners, they're all in favor of this. They like it a lot.
That's good.
That's good news. Something else that I think is important to, to realize is that in talks with my husband, the county board would probably be very in favor of this as well. They would like to get this taken care of, and no longer have this conversation every year about, how to fund Hudson Library. So, I would recommend, if you can, get it done before the April elections, because who knows what will happen during the April elections, since all of the county supervisors are up for reelection at that time.
Okay, okay. We all, I, I think the pieces are all in place, so we just need to start moving forward right away on it after the first of the year.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about storm damage? And I know the library's still closed. Are employees being compensated still? You know, just knowing how tight times are right now, are our employees being taken care of?
Employee, yes, that's a good question. Employees are being compensated, however, there are a number of employees that have had their hours reduced because of this. I think that's probably understandable. But, but at, at this point, that's what's happening.
Is that something like the insurance will cover, since there was storm damage?
No, I don't know the answer to that. Erin, do you have any idea about that?
No, I mean, we can't get reimbursement for, you know, lost employee staffing hours, but, you know, I think Shelley's done the best she can to make sure that they're maintaining as close to their regular hours as possible. You know, we do have a number of part-timers and things like that, so there is enough work still to be done, and there'll actually be more work to be done, once we get the cleaning process done. You know, right now, the, the dangerous part is, you know, we can't even really have staff touching the books, because there could be glass blown into the books. So basically, every book is being cleaned and all that, so, so while there is a little reduction, as the mayor said, it's not much, and they will pick those hours back up real soon, because I think like Mike said, that ServPro's going to be in there tomorrow, and they'll be wrapping that up pretty quick, and then they'll be able to get back into getting books organized and ready for curbside, and things like that.
Thank you.
They have to go through every book, page by page, in order to clean these books.
Wow.
Yeah, good task. Any other questions? All right, so we'll get, get more information here back when we've got it. All right. With that, notice is hereby given that the city council may proceed into a closed session, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved.
I would actually read them both.
Yeah, I'm going to, yep.
Okay.
And once we're done with that, then we go back into closed session, or stay in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.35, Sub L, Sub G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the city to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation, Walbrand LLC, CEO Walmart Real Estate Business Trust versus the City of Hudson Property Tax Deal. All right, do we have a motion?
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to go into closed session. Is this in here, or is it over in my office?
Your office, Mayor, and then Councilmember Weber, just stay on where you are. We're going to use the same link, and I'll just pump off the council chambers.
Okay, so we'll see everybody across the hall. All right, we are back in open session. We have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to approve a claim adjusting the Walbrand valuation to $5,764,200.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. All right, so, the only thing I've got is I do want to, I do want to congratulate our Hudson Women's Tennis Team for going to state. They represented us well to get there, and unfortunately, they did not win, but, but they certainly represented Hudson well, and we are very proud that they were able to make it to the state tournament. That's all I've got. Anybody else?
Just, I had one thing on public streetlights around town, and I don't know if it has to do with the storm, but the ones on Walnut Street, and over here, are not working. I did send a message to Mike Maraz about it, but if they could follow up with streetlights, some of the employees at the restaurants downtown are uncomfortable walking home without the streetlights on. So if we could have those looked at.
Okay.
I'm looking at Mike, not you, Jeff.
And, Mr. Mayor, I was hoping at the next council meeting, perhaps, you could bring us up to speed on filling in the committee holes, where we have had people resigned, and what the...
Oh, yeah, that's coming up. The positions are coming up next week, or next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Move to adjourn.
Motion, second to adjourn. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned.